All right, 7:00 on Thursday, October 11th. Welcome, everyone. I'll entertain a motion for the agenda, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, the first item is a public hearing seen at Road Shade Trees at Zero Old Oak and Bucket Road. Shaun, just identify yourself for the people in the audience.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Shaun McCarthy with the DPW Engineering Division. And I'm here before you this evening as part of a larger project, a water improvement project, that we were permitting to redirect water from well 17A to Tac Factory Pond instead of Old Oak and Bucket Pond, which is at the water treatment plant. That way it'll flow under 3A and provide supply to the reservoir during the summer months. We selected a location on Old Oak and Bucket Road next to the condos 164 to 170, two separate buildings set back off of Old Oak and Bucket Road. The town owns a large parcel to the west of these properties. And the location we selected looks like it had been previously disturbed. Many years ago, the stone wall has been knocked over and it looks like a breach in the wall at this location, whether somebody was in doing soil testing years ago, but the wall was never repaired. But there is a small sapling on the edge of the right-of-way in front of the stone wall that we are requesting to take down in order to install this transmission main. We have received the order conditions from the local Conservation Commission and we're filing with state agencies currently to have this water main installed.
So that water main, or the water from this brook, because it's a brook, isn't it Shaun?
Which water?
The water that comes from, maybe I'm on-
Well, that's what you were saying. Comes from 17A.
Right.
Pumps it over to Old Oak and Bucket right now, and you're going to move it?
Correct. Right now, it dumps into the pond right at the rotary at the water treatment plant. And then it's taken in by the treatment plant, processed and put into the distribution system. We want to shortcut it and dump it upstream so it has a chance to cross under 3A and into the reservoir, so that we can continue to supply the reservoir through the summer rather than have it dump in at the plant. And when that pond is full, it flows over the weir and out to the ocean. So this, overall, the project is a water supply project.
All right, I'm sorry if I'm confused a little bit because where those condos are on Old Oak and Bucket Road across from the cranberry bogs-
Yep.
-once upon a time, there was discussion that the water from the cranberry bogs, and they're not used at this point, would, it goes under the road and it goes into that-
Correct.
-stream, or whatever you want, and then that flows down, and where does that enter?
I think in the late 80s, they were concerned about pollutants from the bog.
Right.
That stream is on the right side of this condo property.
Okay, and this is on the left.
Correct.
Okay, now-
They put a diversion structure in to actually-
Redress the river, doesn't it?
-re-divert that water. Geez, I think it comes out eventually at the same location, just south of the pond at Old Oak and Bucket Pond, not into the pond, but just past it. That ditch is on the right side of-
Okay.
...the condo property and we're on the left.
And dumps the river.
Right? Yep.
Right into the river. Because there was talk at one point of purchasing the cranberry bog for the water.
Correct. I think they did some investigating-
And it wasn't potable.
-actually drilling back there.
It was not potable.
I have come across a report in the Water Department.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just trying to-
Sure, yeah, no, it's a big piece of property, so it's tough to figure out exactly where we are, and this is just to the left of, like I say, those two buildings-
Okay.
-that house two condos each.
Just trying to orient myself.
The tree warden was out and determined that the tree was okay to be removed. It is a small sapling.
And you're going to just replace the rocks?
And we'll actually, when we're done, we'll actually rebuild the stone wall. The rocks are all there, they've just been pushed to the side.
Questions from the board?
Is the only thing here, this is just the, for the stone wall, that's all you're asking?
And the tree in the public right-of-way. The trees all covered with vines.
Oh, okay.
So it's technically it's a public shade tree, so that's why it's a joint public hearing with, you know, it's a public shade tree and scenic road hearing.
Karen, are you all set?
All set, agree with what Shaun said, and everything's, uh-
How much does that project cost?
It's, well, we're looking at around 100 to run that water main through the woods. We've gone through a couple of different iterations, leaving 17, often different directions, and there's resource areas all over the place out there. And this had the least impact on any of the wetlands or the wetland buffers. That's why we chose to head this direction. I'm not sure what the state agencies are going to require out of us in terms of permitting.
Just out of curiosity, and this has nothing to do with the shade trees, but more with the, with the project you're doing here, it looks like you're tapping into an eight-inch main?
Correct. That is the main that pipes the water from well 17 down Old Oak and Bucket and then into the pond.
So you'll be able to run this in either direction?
Correct. Yeah, we could shut that gate and send it upstream or up reservoir during the summer or actually any time that we felt we could. The water that comes out of 17A needs to be treated, it's high in manganese. This is one of the projects we're proposing to put a well on-site at, if it goes that way.
To put a well on-
I'm sorry, filtration system.
Yeah.
At well 17A. This is, this is more of an immediate fix that we could get results from much quicker than putting a building out there. You're only looking at about half of the project to what you-
Yeah, I assume that.
-is included in your, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
About 1,700 feet.
Is everyone all set? Yes. A motion, please.
I move to close the scenic road at public shade tree public hearing and that the planning board votes approve the disturbance of approximately 21 feet of stone wall and the removal of one four-inch pine tree in the public right-of-way of Zero Old Oak and Bucket Road for a water transmission line for applicant town of Citro Engineering Division. The stone wall shall be restored.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a vote, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time.
Okay, we are a little ahead of ourselves. We have continued public hearing, da-da-da-da-da, at office 7:30. Karen, is anyone coming in for 90 and vinyl or Crescent Ave?
Yeah, I believe they are coming in.
They're all coming in.
I believe they're coming in. I mean, we could do the minutes and accounting and liaison reports now to get them over within a short amount of time.
Okay, all right.
I move to approve the minute meetings, the meeting minutes for September 13, 2018 and September 27, 2018.
Is there a second?
Send us an email.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the requisition of $2,730 to Merrill Corporation for sign inspections for Curtis Estates, for $16.75 to Schwab Incorporated for engraved nameplate for Rebecca Lewis, for $4,000 to the town of Citro for purchase slash installation of a storm scepter, for $15,584.11 to Blanchard Farm LLC for final release of surety, for $25 to Environmental Business Council of New England Inc. for Kyle Boyd's attendance to the Ocean and Coastal Resources Program, the 30th Annual Living Shorelines Conference.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who's Kyle Boyd?
He's the new coastal resource officer.
Oh, they did hire someone?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, liaison reports.
Nothing's happening really in conservation. I did go to the advisory meeting last week, where we had a long, 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 long discussion about CPC. An hour and 40 something minutes on one piece of property. There's talking about the water stuff tonight, which is too bad people don't go tonight, the advisories. There's not a lot of pushback, lots of questioning about that builder block out there and how come somebody wasn't going to buy it, and, but I think generally they're looking forward, they're going to give a general approval of it. And that's about it.
CBC doesn't meet again until Monday night, so there's, and EDC doesn't meet again till whenever.
Water resource hasn't met since their last meeting. I know zoning board had one meeting for the 40B hiring Brook Meadows last week, I wasn't able to attend, but I will try to catch up on the video and fill you guys in, but I think that that's moving forward pretty quickly.
Yeah, okay. All right, anybody else?
Another bad accident on 3A today.
Yes. They had two in three days. Weekend before last? One on a Friday night with three cars and one on Sunday afternoon with two cars.
Oh, at the same intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then again today.
And then another one today.
Another three-car accident today.
Which intersection?
It's at Man Lot and 3A, because you have the gas station, Man Lot, both ways, the public safety center. And now they're going to put in a digital sign in front of the public safety center, because I think I told you at the last meeting that it had been approved under 710-5E or whatever. And then if the 250 units go in across the street for the 40B, that's going to be a war zone. So don't use that road. At any rate, so there's that.
I guess we thought things were going to take a little longer.
I guess so, but that's okay. How about anything for planning and development? Karen?
Well, we remain very busy. We have a number of upcoming projects in the next few weeks that we'll be meeting on and everything is just very busy. We anticipate next time having a public hearing for an accessory dwelling and a mixed-use building. And we understand perhaps Cumberland Farms is coming in before the end of the year and the MBTA parking lot maybe for the Drew Company perhaps the beginning of next year.
Wow.
So we have a lot of, a lot-
A lot going on. Advisory told us they were going to send somebody as a liaison.
To what?
To planning.
Really?
That's good.
Glad to see them.
Yeah. They did say that.
Has Cumberland Farms come forward with any more plans?
No.
No?
No, they're working on, they're working on getting their submissions together.
Okay.
Hopefully with the whole gas pump behind.
Or somewhere.
I just know they're working on traffic studies and that kind of information, but they do anticipate filing sometime before the end of the year.
Okay. All right, a question, we have, let's see.
Give a report on, Bill and I met with Brad Washburn on the master plan review. We did a review of the, the submittals for the consultant for the master plan process. So we've, we've sort of narrowed it down and invited a couple of, of the, what we considered the top candidates to come back and do a more in-depth interview. So we have to go through that process, and then I assume after that we'll be able to actually, you know, award the contract and get started on the master plan process. I think it's last week in October, we're doing those meetings, right?
26?
26.
I think it's the 26th.
Yep.
I doubt it's what was proposed.
Mm-hmm. And we, we missed you at that meeting, but we understood where you were.
Yeah, it was a tough morning.
We did, and we should probably sort of figure this out, we did sort of maybe luck into how we arranged, but we just wanted to make sure that wasn't considered a public meeting, if we had three members of the planning board there.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, would have been, probably, but-
You should post it. There's going to be three of you there.
But didn't go. But didn't go, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll just, maybe we can just manage schedules and only have two of us there at any one time.
Yeah, I think that would be the-
Okay, is there anything else that we need to, uh?
No.
All right, 50 Country Way is coming in, not 50, 90 and vinyl. Question Rose, Karen, they put up signs?
Yeah.
What does that, for a bank and what have you, are they allowed to do that? Do they have to come before anybody?
To, to put up a sign?
It's at a whisper, just if I can find it.
It's a big sign.
A sign for what?
Mortgages, yeah.
It's a bank.
A sign needs a building permit from, a sign needs a permit from the building department.
Okay. All right, well, they don't come through us, so hopefully they have their permits. How many are down there now?
Four or five.
Yeah, signs need a building permit from the, from the building department.
Right. All right, well, we have another 12 minutes. Is there anything else we can fill in, or should we take a quick break? You are here for?
92 Neil G.
Are you expecting your engineer?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I know he's coming down from Boston, so. I'm sure the traffic is lovely.
So annoying. Steve, that's the first one.
Yeah.
And then scroll down a little more, there's other ones there too. So there were, that's a de entrance to, yeah, vinyl.
Well, we better jiggle things around had we didn't, we thought the first one was going to take a little bit long.
This is a bank, some people who go there looking for a mortgage, huh?
Yeah.
Well, this is a, a sign for people who are working there.
Yeah, but it does, yeah.
Right? Plus the DEP sign, which you have to have up.
Right.
So these are-
Those are okay.
They're okay, yeah.
Yeah, they're individual. I would think they're okay, right? The people working on site?
Yeah.
That's the one that's-
Yeah, questionable.
I did leave a message with the building inspector.
They may have an arrangement with them to provide financing.
Okay. There are people out in the hallway, do you, should we look and see if it's our engineer or?
Oh, yeah, I saw him the other day.
Yeah. They're supposed to be there. How about that?
Should we go early? It was scheduled for 7:30, but I guess it's continued, I suppose we could.
Uh, let's see.
Well, if you, potentially if you just talk about the common driveway before 7:30.
Terry's right down the hall. He's just using the restroom before.
All right, okay.
What we could do- Potentially talk about just the common driveway part before 7:30 versus the trees.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that would be-
Yeah, we could do that.
All right, you can start about the common driveway.
Common driveway part before 7:30, and then at 7:30, we'll go on the trees.
I mean, if you'd like, we can wait another 10 minutes.
No, no, we don't want to do that.
Okay. All right.
As much as we enjoy your company, we would just as soon have this done, over with, get out of here.
I just spent 90 minutes to be here from Boston. I'd love to get there.
All right, if you would introduce yourself and make your presentation, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm attorney Steve Guard for the applicant this evening. With me is Terry McGovern from Stenbeck and Taylor, the project engineer, and Greg and Wendy Sears, the property owners. As you know from our last hearing, this is a common driveway administrative review for the board's consideration. We have gone through various peer review letters, which we have incorporated into the plans. As an update, we have received an email from the fire department, and they are satisfied with the emergency egress, which I know that was on the punch list from last time. We have updated the common driveway access and utility easement. I think it's in the same form that it was in last time, but Karen made a good catch in one of the last paragraphs, it referenced a special permit, which this is not, so I changed that to a planning board administrative certificate of action. And I think the only other thing we did was, there was a change in a word for rain gardens versus basins. And I think we ended up, because the plan shows it as a basin, so we just changed that. Other than that, the, the plan itself is almost exactly what we had before with incorporating the peer review comments. I think we incorporated in the easement area, the actual drainage basin this time, so that it's all part of the right of either owner to access and maintain. That having been said, I'll let Terry give you the engineering update.
Can you see that? Can you see the, um, the plan on the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Terry McGovern from Stenbeck and Taylor. Briefly, in response to Peter's review, most of the, the comments that he made via the first plan were relative to stormwater, and they centered on two particular things. One, several of his comments mentioned adding roof recharge, which we've done at several points around the proposed house. Basically, those will be precast concrete refusers. So that addressed one of his main concerns. The other was to add a grate to drain soil along the property line, which we've added. He also made note that because we had originally shown this as a rain garden, it felt that we should have greater horizontal separation to sewage system, which is tied to five issue more than a planning issue. We went back and looked at basically what we were proposing for recharge out of the rain, out of the rain garden was a very small amount, so we basically re, kind of reformat of this as a detention basin. And those in effect addressed his main concerns. We widened the driveway. Originally, we had shown 14 feet, we widened it out to 16 feet of pavement, again with the two-foot stone shoulder on one side, two-foot stone grass, grass shoulder on the opposite side, which took care of the fire chief's comment. We now have the full 16-foot width of pavement and the 20-foot wide easement. So that addressed the primary concerns that both peer review and the fire chief had. What we did also in a matter, kind of in a matter of addressing those concerns, the plan set expanded from one sheet, which had a lot of information on it, to, we actually just separated a lot of the information out, basically showing a construction detail sheet of the detention basin. And mind you, it's not a detention basin like you'd see in a subdivision or a large commercial project. This is in somebody's front yard, so it's not a huge, huge area, but it's designed to capture all the runoff from the driveway, which is the purpose. We have a vegetated soil, which is next to the driveway, next to the stone diaphragm filter strip. We're showing that we're putting a couple of check dams in it, again, to just kind of filter flow and slow it down a little bit. We have the full width of the driveway section shown, the 20-foot easement width, the 16-foot pavement width, shown the roof recharge that we added on there as well. We did make a note, one of the items that came up was site distance, which does kind of roll into the scenic road portion of it. Peter noted that it appeared to be shown it was at the edge of pavement, it was actually taken seven feet back. We did add a note to the, the first two sheets, is we noted that there were only a couple of trees to be removed. And in one of Peter's comments, he mentioned that there might be some underlying brush and vegetation a little further down that might necessitate trimming without having to take any additional trees. We did make a note of that on there, that no additional trees to be removed, but there may be some, some trimming of branches and some removal of some of the scrub, kind of the scrub layer of the base. And he was satisfied with that. We also showed, up in our notes, again, just to make it a little easier, besides our construction detail, we showed the town and ASHO requirements for site distance on that. So that addressed all of his chief concerns, and then as part of, again, kind of expanding and making the process clearer, we put an extensive construction sequencing and erosion control methodology, and just put it right on the plan itself, rather than have it be in some kind of a separate document, even though we address it in an hour, even though we put all of the information into the very large binder with the drainage relative to the stormwater checklist. It's also right here on the plan, which will be on record, so it's right where everybody can get a handle on it easily. Oftentimes, that's preferable to having something lost in the middle of the binder somewhere where a contractor is going to look at, he's not going to look at, he's not going to look at a three-inch binder, he's going to look on the set of plans and say, is everything I need show right here on the plans? And that's what we've done, so we've pulled that information up, and that's why you're going to have a four-plan set instead of just a single plan showing the common driveway easement. And again, I believe in all of Peter's comments, says that we've addressed everything satisfactorily, and at this point, we feel we have a complete submittal.
Okay, thank you. Karen?
The comments from the consulting engineer have all been addressed, and so the submittal is, is complete.
So could I ask a question about that? There was one comment that didn't look like it was resolved on Peter's comments, so I just want to make sure.
Which, which one?
It had to do with the width of the spillway.
We can, we-
We, we did, we did note that. It's actually on the construction detail sheet. It's on sheet three. I have noted up in the top here, across.
I'm sorry, where is it?
Up here, it says detention basin cross section.
Be quiet, you have something to say.
Shows the top of it here.
Okay, is that, is that the width of the spillway you talked about?
It actually is the burn, it's the same as the burn section on top. Basically, the top of the, the burn and spillway shown in the drain cowl is three feet, uh, three feet across.
Yeah, pardon?
I asked Peter about it, and he said, he saw it, and we were, I think there was another comment he made, and he said, are you sure we're all set? And he said, yes.
And when I discussed it with him, he said, you know, it's, I have it as a draft condition in the motion, so if you, you know, it would be covered.
I just want to follow up on his comment in his, in his report, where he said there's, appears to be an area of the basin that's below elevation 47 feet?
I did-
Is that resolved?
Yes. And that, I sent him, we actually had this point right here, and actually, on the colored plane, there's a tree symbol right sitting right on top of it. There's a contour line that wraps around and makes it a little bit difficult to see it. What I told him was, on the final mile line, I'll take that tree symbol out of there and put a spot elevation. I showed him. I showed him a spot elevation of 47 feet. His concern, and I wish I had a little bit blown up version of this.
His concern was it might spill over to the road, right?
Yeah, I think this just might be a little bit easier to see than this one. What he was concerned about was, as you come down, of course, we have the swale and the stone trying to run the entire length of the driveway, and knowing that it's going to be a very small, you know, it's, obviously, once you get below this point, there might be a very small bit of runoff that's going to get into the street from the very apron or end of the driveway. Of course, as Peter also noted, you have a catch basin that's just less than 100 feet down the street, that will absorb that, and it's going to be an insignificant amount of runoff. Right here at the edge, what we tried to do is make sure that we have a little, kind of a little swale, if you will, at the very bottom of that driveway. And his concern was that that swale actually was lower than the spillway. I told him, no, we've actually, we actually have it a few tenths higher than the spillway. So the water's going to spill out, not into the driveway, it'll go over the emergency spillway and go in the other direction before it comes back towards the driveway.
Okay.
They've submitted this plan right here. Ultimately, if the board approves this tonight, then they will be coming back with a Form A plan to actually divide, to break it up into the two lots.
And since it's after 7:30, we can talk about trees.
Again, you have a, you have a comment from the tree board, that it's, he has no problem with these trees being removed.
Okay, great. All right, comments, questions from the board? Rebecca?
Nope.
Ben?
What's going to go in the detention basin? Is that to be planted or just low?
Grass, just grass.
Like turf grass?
Yeah.
Steve, you're all set?
I'm all set.
Yeah?
All set.
I'm all set, too. This is a pleasure to have something so well put together, and in response to questions, I think Merrill did an excellent job, as you have as well, and it's a pleasure to have someone come in with a plan that's done, and done properly.
Thank you. It took us a while to get back, but we wanted to make sure that when we got back, it was complete.
Well, it's complete. Good job.
May I say something, too? My experience with Terry has been awesome.
Would you identify yourself with the... Right, who you are?
I'm Greg Sears, the owner of the property. And just to confer with you that my experience with Terry is very meticulous and detailed and good guy.
Well, it showed. Thank you. All right, are we ready to move on? Adam?
Okay. I move to close the scenic road public shade tree hearing, and that the planning board votes will approve the disturbance of approximately 20 linear feet of stone wall to be relocated in the existing driveway section to be abandoned, and the removal of three shade trees, an eight-inch pine tree, an eight-inch oak tree, and four-inch sassafras tree, for construction of a common driveway for the property at 92 Neil Gate Street in Citewright.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are we in the discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous, okay? Onto the next one.
Okay. Based on the site plan entitled Common Driveway Plan in Citewright, Mass., showing a Division Apostles 57-1-3 and 57-1-6 revised dated September 28, 2018 by Stenbeck and Taylor, the comments, reports, and testimony provided, the planning board opines that the requirements of the town of Citewright zoning by law section 770.6 site plan standards of review have been met to a degree consistent with the use of the site for the purpose permitted in the regulations of the district in which the land is located, and to approve the site plan administrative review for a common driveway for 92 Neil Gate Street Apostles 57-1-3 and 57-1-6 with the following conditions. Number one, all site work shall be in substantial conformance with the plan entitled Common Driveway Plan in the town of Citewright, Massachusetts, showing a Division Apostles 57-1-3 and 57-1-6 92 Neil Gate Street by Stenbeck and Taylor Incorporated, revised dated 9/28/18, Sheet 1 of 4, Sheet 2 of 4, Sheet 3 of 4, and Sheet 4 of 4, except as may be modified to meet the conditions below. Two, documentation should be provided that the deed for each lot served by the common driveway include a restrictive covenant stating that the common driveway shall never be considered for acceptance as in town road, and that all maintenance and repair of the common driveway and drainage facilities shall be the responsibility of the owners of the common driveway. Three, a pre-construction conference is required prior to starting construction. The applicant will provide a deposit of $5,000 prior to the pre-construction conference to guarantee cleanup of the site and providing an ass bill plan showing the common driveway, its easement, and the site grading amenities. Four, the homeowners of the property serviced by the common driveway shall be responsible for the maintenance associated with it. Five, additional clarification should be added to the plan to specify the width of the spillway and clarify the contour shown at the basin adjacent to the driveway. Six, the application has been reviewed for compliance to the town of Citewright Stormwater by Law and Regulations. The engineering review indicated that it is their opinion that the requirements and standards have been met if the plan is constructed as shown. Seven, the town planner is to be notified upon completion of construction. Eight, the common driveway is contingent upon the endorsement and recording at the Registry of Deeds of Plymouth, Mass. of a Form A plan for property at 92 Neil Gate Street, Citewright, Mass. And nine, the standard conditions for common driveways approved by the planning board after a public hearing on December 17, 2015, shall be included as conditions of this decision.
Okay. Will we read these, though?
No.
No, we just, I, we have some new members on the board, and I thought that the members of the board should just see what the board voted on back a few years ago as the standard conditions.
We don't need to read these two pages, so.
I have just one edit.
Yes.
Could propose here, well, do you want to get a second, first?
Second, please.
Sorry.
All right, discussion.
Okay, under number four, says the homeowners of the properties, you know, by the common driveway should be responsible for the maintenance associated with it. And I think we just want to be clear that it's the common driveway and the associated stormwater management system.
Okay. Stormwater maintenance?
Well, the stormwater system.
And that was all spelled out, again, in the common driveway easement, too. I mean, that, the...
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify that it's not just the pavement.
Right, it's a good...
Okay. Anything else to...
No, that's it.
All right, I have, I'll entertain our motion as amended.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those closed? It's unanimous. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
All right.
Great job.
She came and everything. She pulled out all the big stops tonight.
All right, our next public meeting, which was for 8 o'clock, and we're running early, but that's okay, because Chief Murphy is already here.
He was.
He was, he's...
He's over there.
Chief, if you'd like to come up?
Do we have to wait for public?
Oh, okay. No, it's a public meeting, not a hearing.
Oh, it's not a hearing?
No.
So you planned administrative...
How is this any different from what we saw before?
Who's this? Paul Marabito. I can give you an overview of what I have, just on the, on the, up the other, these two and all. Give you a hand here. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're here to discuss...
Did you just turn the...
Sure. Discuss Phase 1 of the Hummer Rock project, which is to replace, actually, the installation and building of a two-bay garage just south of the Hummer Rock station. This garage will be 42 by 48 feet, will house one full-time engine and probably a spare piece of apparatus for now. It's, again, 42 by 48 feet. We're going to put it just about five feet south of the existing building, and the reason for that is we're, we have some funding from the state, as well as former town meeting to do a renovation, possible replacement of the existing fire head, living quarters. We'll be going back to town meeting if it's approved by the selectmen to move forward, to get additional funds to try to replace or extensively renovate the existing station. But this Phase 1 now is strictly for the apparatus bay. Again, it's just over 2,000 square feet. We've, we've met with all the boards, this is our final board here. Conservation, we want to go back to conservation, because we had a peer review of the, of the site plan, which was some recommendations, but overall, it went fine. So just, Paul Marabito should be here shortly, but that's, the general, is a two-bay garage, what we're discussing tonight.
And did you not receive zoning relief from the zoning board? Didn't they grant you a permit? You went before them.
The zoning board was not for this.
Oh, that was for the sign, right, sorry.
The sign, correct, yes. So we denied it. So, so that's what we're looking at right now. I've gotten several prices on, on buildings. We're looking at, there's two buildings I've built in town, one, the Citewright Boatworks Building, and also the, the brewery in Green Bush. Both buildings seem to be recommended by reputable builders in town. We've done site visits to both buildings. There's one building being built now by Citewright Boatworks Building in, and actually, in, up by Tomasi's in Pembroke. So we did a site visit there with Neil Doug and Bob Vogel, myself, and Kevin Kelly to both places, just to look at the best building we could do to build down here. So we had some good ideas, both, both owners are very happy with the buildings. So we're sort of doing our homework, see what the best fit for long-term for this Hummer Rock Station is.
So how is this any different from what you had brought in the first time?
It's not different at all. So the first time I came in, I just wanted to put all the projects on the radar for you to have first, this board to be able to look at, comment on, and we have gone through the, you know, the various boards, and we'll back here to hopefully get your blessing.
We did get a comment late this afternoon from the Conservation Commission that they have, from Amy, that they have reviewed the stormwater, and they intend to probably close the hearing on the 22nd for the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, okay.
So is it, I, this is for the whole thing, or this is just for the apparatus?
We're doing for the whole property, but the first phase is what we're trying to do now, so if we get the whole property dealt with, we're hoping to go back to spring town meeting. And, and the key to try to move forward quickly in the spring is so if we have to tear down, if we decide to replace the building, we have to tear it down, we want to have as little downtime as possible. That second bay and the apparatus bay would be able to house some living quarters, probably some type of trailer inside, so it would be out of the weather, and also, we don't want to do this over the summertime where it's, it's pretty busy down there. So it may be a late spring project, more likely a fall project if we do get Phase 2 approved. And the goal is to try to get this, from what I'm understanding, it's about a two-month build, to leave, build this building, and then they bring it on-site, and they put it together. We're hoping to get the slab and the foundation poured before it gets too cold, so they can build this and have this done over the winter, and then we'll really know what we need for cost estimates for the new building or the renovated building.
How old is the existing building?
Built in 1941.
Oh, I think it's time.
It's time. It's tired. The past two storms, we had water actually touching the floorboards in the living quarters, and about eight inches of water in the apparatus bay. It's inside, the outside is the best-looking part of the building. So, believe it or not, so it's in tough shape, and to do an extensive renovation, I have preliminary costs in that building, it's probably about, say, $325,000 to extremely renovate the whole thing, compared to probably $350,000 to build a new building, to have a, basically, a two-bedroom prefab brought to the location, put on pilings. Either way, it has to be raised, and to try to raise that building where it's split with the apparatus base in the middle, that will be a challenge as well, talking with some of the, the people who raise buildings.
Just a question, throw this out, is there any potential to put in, basically, sanitary facilities for the public?
I know that the selectmen discussed that, so that's an issue. I'm sure the septic would have to be upgraded, I mean, that's a possibility, so I think...
I thought I saw something from the Board of Health that they needed information on the septic system.
Well, we did have a voluntary assessment done back in June by Pete Spencer, to basically see if the system's working. He said the system's working, he said typically in a home, it would pass, but he goes, due to the, the regulations on the barrier beach, he goes, it, it wouldn't quite pass because of the, the high, high tide, but he goes, are you changing the type of building, or are you increasing the bedrooms? I said, no. So that, I was told, it's functioning fine, everything's flowing fine, but if I was to add any additional flow there, we have to upgrade it. And we may even look at upgrading, you know, you know, with a new building, but right now, I don't think it's a requirement.
No, I understand, but it would just be, you know, something for the public added?
Yes, we did have the assessment done, that's the first thing I did. The first thing I did, and they say it's flowing, there's actually two tanks, and the pipe in between is flowing well, so it's functioning properly. It's just, you know, it is an old system, but it's working well. We don't have a big demand down there, there's two firefighters down there.
No, I'm, right.
And that's the way it would stay.
Right, but if at all possible, it could be upgraded, but I'm sure that would be an evidence.
You know, and I'm looking at that possibility, actually, I just asked for a price on that, so if I have to add that to the, to the new building, the Phase 2, which would actually be more applicable, because this is not going to really have any bathroom in it, so, but that's, I'm looking at the cost of that to see if it's feasible, and if it is, I want to add that to the project.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Paul, you're late, but actually, you're early.
We're early.
You're early.
Can we go through the plans? You can go over the site?
Yes, we are.
Good.
Karen?
As long as I could.
Did you explain everything you talked?
Yeah, I was there.
Are there, are there questions, Steve, on this plan? Because we've seen it before, nothing's changed.
Yeah, well, we made a comment before, it doesn't look like it's really been addressed. I mean, we're still putting a brand-new building in a low-lying area here, on a barrier beach.
So we had to address someone up, Stephen, so we said we're going to mound up the apparatus bay about two feet, and what we're going to do with the size and the foundation, bring that up about two feet. What I want to do is, and so the building is two feet high, that it'll be very close to what the level of FEMA flood level is. When a new building comes, if we build a new building in the existing building, we want it to be managed together, to mound, so it looks like a natural building built together. So raising up that foundation, mounting it two feet, the slab, and have a two-foot foundation around that and build the building atop of it, the building itself is on a hump way. And the apparatus, you know, we will be able to got that, got to deal with, they got down a flower last week, you know, but the building itself, we pretty much power it to the level of FEMA wants it to be. So we did take your comments on how can we improve this, so it works to help maintain the building in a big, big storm, but also aesthetically, I need to work out while trying to get in the building now and try to bring it together with natural.
Okay. I think there was another concern about the equipment being able to come out easily to the street.
So we're able to maintain the two feet on the slab, we're still being able to maintain the five, was it five percent?
Five percent.
Yeah, under five percent slope, so we're able to maintain that five percent with two feet up. That was about as high as we could go, so we wanted to stay within the slope, that's about as high as we can go on the, on those requirements.
Okay.
We have worked with, made contact, is the rubber move on its all-call poles on the front, and actually, that was source, and also, actually, Verizon poles and all. So the setting engineers are going to see what moves one way or the other, which basically right now, so we have to move that as well.
Well, good luck with that, it'll take forever.
Yeah.
So you'll have everything all set and ready to go, and the pole will still be there.
Right.
We'll bring a chainsaw.
That's by the Conservation Commission, and so they, like I said, they anticipate, that was peer-reviewed, and they anticipate closing the hearing on the twenty-second, and they're satisfied that all the comments have been met.
It just feels like in a big storm, there won't be anywhere to put water.
No, there won't be for anybody.
It's all at six feet.
And we, uh, we wanna have the, uh, the building built to, I think it's a hundred and forty-five mile an hour winds, you know, the high standards, just to make sure it's gonna withstand the, you know, if we do get a Cat Two Free hurricane down there.
When that happens, do you routinely take your equipment out?
If we get a Cat Two Free hurricane, we'll hopefully relocate the high ground up here. Um, I would think, we'll look at the expectations of, uh, storm surge, um, you know, the one good thing we do have is in Cape of Texas, you know, the one thing I would say, came around and from the northeast and came back in and, and thought that nothing could happen until I saw Sandy, but, uh, that thing was two miles north, I think, so, you know, we, we deal with it, we're doing the best we can with what we have down there, and, and we're gonna get out of our way as high as we can. Right now, um, a lot of that building probably has damage from being, we've had it with water twice this year, probably back in ninety-one, seventy-eight, so, um, it's tired, it needs, um, we wanna make sure we serve the community of Hummer Rock, um, for long-term, so this is a long-term solution.
Okay. Steve?
Well, no, I just, uh...
It's not gonna be perfect, because it's...
Are there, when you have to retreat from here, where will you go?
My first thought is the church, you know, the parking lot of the church, whatever we gotta do, you know, but this is, um, you know, for all these no-reases we have, we have the highest tide on record in January fourth.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I get that, I, I'm really as much with the individual nor'easter is that we don't really seem to be addressing, you know, um, just the increase, the overall increase in the tide levels that's gonna happen in the next twenty or thirty years, and we're investing, you know, town money in something that's probably gonna be inundated again.
I don't, I believe we're going up to what FEMA tells us to go up to, uh, in the building, so we're going there, actually, it's a foot higher down in, uh, down in Hummer Rock, so we'll meet the standards and, and, you know...
No, I hear that, and that FEMA hasn't really built into, you know, that, into climate change, into that whole.
I get that, you know, I understand, it's gonna happen.
So, we're, we are pouring, you know, town resources in a place, and that's why I was asking, once that all gets inundated, where do you go with a fire, where, where do you go with a fire station? Is there a place?
Yeah, well, you know what, we don't have a place, 'cause Hummer Rock's all, unless we put it booked, that's the only place that's safe and it's something you're talking about. So, um, we're looking at, you know, hopefully the next fifty years, this is gonna survive, there may be, there may be places and times a storm, we've got something in our, just got, you know, what, we may have to be down at Hummer Rock for, for the peak of the storm and get back in, we'll figure that out, we'll have a plan, uh, we could probably use Mossfield Station up on the hill and go from there, it's about a seven-minute response, but we could use that station, I have a regular relationship with Mossfield by achieve, so that would be my plan right now if the storm's coming this week.
All right. All right. Anybody? No?
No, I mean, it, something's gotta be done, and I think this clearly puts it, puts it right out upfront and does what needs to be done initially. I think Stephen's right, long-term, we, we, it's not the answer.
No.
I think this is just a stop-gap measure, really, is what it is.
Four feet from where it is now, so we're gonna be, you know, that's, that's, that's gonna get us along, you know, a lot longer, I mean, right now, to put money to, I mean, that, as is, keep it there, you're wasting your money.
Right.
Yeah, you can't, you can't keep, put money into this, the existing building, 'cause that's, that's a...
It has to come out. Patty?
Real close, I'm set.
Um, it is what it is, unfortunately, there was an excellent piece on Sixty Minutes a few weeks ago about the Netherlands and what they have done, because they're below sea level, and FEMA actually, to Steve's point, has to think about preventing this rather than repairing it.
I agree, I, I don't understand, you know, with the emergency bands, what we're looking at, all of our coastal shoreline, I told you to call eleven and a half million, about eight million, we're getting through FEMA, we gotta find ways to improve, we can't just put back what we see.
No, we can't.
They pay us with their mitigation grants, there are, I've proven for grants out there, so we wanna make sure our shoreline is as resilient as can be, and the seawall's going up two feet, it's the best short-term solution, but long-term, there's something else that has to be done.
Something, absolutely, whether it's an organized retreat or what, but the Netherlands does not have flood insurance, they don't need it, because they have figured out a way and they've spent the money for protection rather than fixing afterwards, but that, that said, are we ready, people?
We're ready.
Is there somebody who, I think this woman maybe?
Oh, are you here for the fi- fire station?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, sorry, Deidre Pizzuto, I live in Butter to the fire station, and...
Okay, you're up.
You're up.
I just wanted to say, we're in support of, you know, a new fire station and making that a facility that can really help firefighters respond to the people of Hummer Rock in a timely manner. Um, I have a very special interest in the property, Sebastian installed it as Eagle Scout Project, the flagpole and the historical signage, so, uh, we have long commitment to that fire station, so we want to support the, the project in any way that we can.
Okay, thank you.
We're sure that flagpole stays there for decades to come, so we're gonna work around that, and actually, Sebastian's project last year was actually got packed up from Connaught down in Senator Connaught, I gave him a tour of the station, and we just signed a contract last week for a hundred thousand dollars towards this project from Senator Connaught, so, uh, Sebastian started that whole, that whole process, and, uh, so that pole will be there for a long time.
Good. Thank you, all right, I'll entertain motion.
Okay, based on the site plan entitled, proposed site plan at River Street in Citrus, Mass, dated September twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, with revisions through ten-five, two thousand and eighteen, Sheet Two and Two of Two, by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., the application comments and testimony provided, the planning board opines that the requirements of the Town of Citrus zoning bylaws, Section seven-seven-zero-point-six, site plan standards of review have been met to a degree consistent with the use of the site with the purpose permitted in the regulations of the district in which the land is located, and to approve the site plan administrative review for the proposed site plan at four River Street for the Town of Citrus with the following conditions. Number one, all site work shall be in substantial conformance with the plan entitled, proposed site plan at River Street in Citrus, Mass, dated September twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, with revisions through ten-five, two thousand and eighteen, Sheet Two and Two of Two, by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., except as may be modified to meet the conditions below. Two, construction shall, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM on weekdays and eight AM on Saturday, and shall cease no later than seven PM or sunset, whichever comes earlier. No construction is permitted on Sunday or a legal federal holiday. Construction includes operation of machinery, delivery of materials to the site, and idling of vehicles. Three, where the site plan administrative review requires approval permitting or licensing from any local, state, or federal agency, such as required approval permitting or license to do a condition of the Town of Citrus Planning Board's approval of the site plan, including but not limited to those of the Town of Citrus, DPW, Building Department, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Commission on Disabilities. All the necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to construction.
Steve, do you want to add anything? I'll have a second, please.
Second.
Do you want to add anything?
No, there's nothing I can add that.
I know.
We'll solve our problem.
No, it won't. All right.
I just have one quick, does this work for, in terms of Phase One and Phase Two? I mean...
Yes, it does.
Okay.
All votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's a vote, thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Another great job of finding grants. Another great job of finding grant money.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still work on this, until Tuesday or tomorrow, we can't wait long.
You go back to bed, Paul.
Poor Paul. All right, we're still running, really, um, ahead of ourselves here. How far is this project along?
Excuse me?
How far is this project along? Is it all approved?
What?
The, oh, is that seaside? No, seaside.
It's all approved, they just want to come in and talk about different, um...
New buildings.
Buildings.
Uh, Karen, could we possibly do the A and R on One Crescent Avenue since it's basically housekeeping?
Yeah, we could, I can, um, I can call, um, and just tell them...
Isn't there a proponent? Don't we need the proponent here?
Mr. Burkhart was planning to come.
He was planning to come.
Okay, all right. Well, they're all coming, and...
We're early.
And we're early, so, is somebody coming in?
Do you want me to ask Mr. Gere, Mr. Maravido, Mr. Maravido wants to do A and N ninety and vinyl, he's representing them as well, I don't know if Mr. Sheeran is coming?
Well, is that a, is that a Form A, or is that a...
Yeah, it's a Form A.
It's a Form A.
Yeah, well, let's do it.
Ninety and vinyl? Come on, whip our vinyl on.
Can you do this Form A for us, Paul?
Yes.
Good.
Ninety and vinyl?
Yes. Okay. All right, tell us what they want to do and why they want to do it. Do you need a plan?
Do you need a plan?
Let's see, here we go. There's a plan.
The owners of a subdivision, which is approximately twenty-nine acres from the courtesies, approximately half of it, which were effective open space, and the other half was, um, to remain separate from the, um, subdivision, and those parcels were separated to a convey in a year and a half, three years ago. Um, as you know, they're trying to resolve the issue of the open space, they're getting disability permits, so we had a meeting with Conservation Commission a week and a half ago, and they were, in this parcel, which is nine-point-seven-six acres, and they added it to here, and, you know, disposition of this, um, either, right now, it's, it, it may go to the school, but I'm sure they're willing to use it, and if they don't use it, then it would become part of this open space.
All right.
But the first step is to separate these two together, so...
You're combining the open space with the subdivision?
Yes.
That's so that they can get, um, somebody to take it over, they can get a CR on it, otherwise, with the little bit that they have, five acres, nobody wants it. So, but if they add the, um, almost ten acres to it, then Conservation will take it.
Maybe I misunderstood you, but I thought they were taking the...
Yes, you are.
This looks like it's... Am I missing something?
No, would you...
No.
No.
Previously, they broke off that lot, too, which is now, Paul, just as indicated, was broken out by the former Lot Two, um, into those...
I don't know what former Lot Two was.
This is, this is a subdivision.
Yep.
This line here, from here, where's the subdivision approved, and this here was the other half of the property that they purchased from the courtesies. This is the wetland, and the wetland comes down in here, there are pockets of upland in here, so we met with Conservation, and they're receptive to accepting this, and adding it to the open space and the subdivision. And this piece here, actually a Butts Haveli School, now, if they want it, they could have it, if they don't, one or a few years, they...
So, where's the open space in the subdivision?
The open space is, is in here, it's here, and it's a parcel over here. I think there's...
This plan is just to break up that, the other lot, at some point, if that, if it will have to be, it could be joined into the open space.
Just, just for clarification, though, 'cause I'm kind of with you, Stephen Mulker, so, we, we as a board, when we permitted Lot One, the subdivision, this current plan, parcel three and parcel four, we've never seen that, that land before.
No, no, that was not part of the...
Okay, so I, this is totally new to us, we've never seen this.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it was just basically, and to enable them...
So, so, so the twelve acres, twelve-point-seven-five acres wasn't enough for, for Conservation to take it?
No, Steve, you, this was not part of the whole, this was not part of it at all. This five acres that would be open space for the subdivision, it's not enough for Conservation to put a CR on it, they don't want any part of it, and nobody else will. So, by taking the other lot that they had, which was approximately, what, fifteen acres, thereabouts, thereabout, oh, fifteen acres, they're cutting off three that someday may go to the Haveli School someday, and they're doing parcel three, which would then be added to the open space in the subdivision, to make it...
Yeah, the plan is to add three to the subdivision now.
Right, add three to subdivision, and then that would satisfy Conservation, we can get the CR, or they can get the CR on it, and they're not, it's not buildable, and it's...
Yeah, Conservation's complaint is that, oh, these little piddly pieces of land, they, they don't have, they're just too small for them.
Right.
But the first step was to break that remaining land into two separate parcels, one to go with subdivision, and one, one to the school for now.
Right, okay, do you, do you understand, Steve?
Yeah, I guess you could, on a Form A, you can do whatever you want, as long as it, it meets the requirements of Form A, which I assume it does.
Yeah, because it's labeled not as buil-, not as buildable lots.
Right.
It's just, if that...
The connection between the open space here and that parcel hasn't been assessed yet, or addressed, right? And I assume we're gonna see that at some point?
The, um...
We're gonna see a conservation restriction that includes all of the open space in here?
Yes.
Yes?
Jeff, can you speak to this?
I'm kind of on the periphery of it, but the answer to Steve's question is yes. There's, uh, I think that there's, what, one of three ways that's set forth in the permit, and we're gonna comply with that, we're in discussions now. As far as the A and R plan is concerned, um, all A and R plans do is give you the ability to alienate land, just because you have a plan sign that shows new parcels doesn't necessarily mean that, it doesn't mean anything unless there's an instrument of conveyance that makes reference to that. As far as the taxation is concerned, I don't know if I heard you, or a separate parcel, Steve, I wasn't sure, I kind of walked in late, that would happen at the time that the plan is reported at the Registry of Deeds, if anyone's reported, the, the protocol would be for the tax assessor to, at that point, have, uh, recognize these as separate lots at that juncture, is the triggering event is recording, so...
I, I was more concerned about making sure the conservation restriction on Lot One got done...
Right.
In, as necessary, right? And if parcel three ultimately is part of that deal, well, none of that's here right now. This is just a division of land.
That's right, right.
It will be, it will be complied with, and we're not gonna do a request for a hearing on that, on that item in the future, and we're not even asking...
They're just asking to buy it.
It's not right, it's close to right, but it's not.
Well, all right. Okay, any further discussion? It's a Form A. I'll entertain, um, motion.
I move to endorse as approved or not required a plan of land in the Town of Citrus, Mass, ninety and vinyl road, prepared by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant owner ninety and vinyl LLC, dated nine-twenty-four eighteen, as the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision, because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in lot line, which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Citrus zoning bylaws.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote, two in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're running early, but that's okay.
That's great for us, I mean, we're home, it's a school night.
All right, we are here...
as required under the Central Zoning Bylaws.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a vote. Do you want to... Thank you. And we're running early, but that's okay.
That's great for us. I mean, these are our homes, it's going to...
All right, we are here. Don't you have a new boy?
I do, he's, uh, well, two months, so he has, he's a three, three, that's just...
Makes it interesting. All right, we have a public meeting, Seaside, it's a residential cluster special permit, waiver, or modification request for building elevations. Presentation, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Jeff, please, Steve Moore, Gerelese, and Harrison, here with Dave Buckley of Toll Brothers. Just in a nutshell, is, uh, very diligently, your, your special permit decision makes a specific reference to the specific elevations that were provided to the board as part of the hearing process, and the unit groupings as well. And so, um, your decision indicates that, that, that the project has to be built in accordance with those elevations and unit groupings. And essentially, what, what I've done is I've sent a letter into the board along with copies of elevations, and requested three things under the condition of your, your permit, which is condition number eighty-eight, that allows minor and insignificant, or rather, allows insignificant changes that don't materially adversely affect the purpose of the special permit decision to, to be modified. And so, what we're looking for essentially is to change the decision to make reference to the plans that were provided to you, and it deviates in, in only three ways. One, for marketing purposes, Toll decided to change the names on all of them, not the substance on all of them, just the names. Two, there were some comments during the public process, I think Richard was, was one of the more vocal commenters on this, that, that was asking for some, that were asking for some variations in what was offering throughout the community. And so, Toll went back and looked at a few particular issues. Number one, two of the units that were formally referenced in the decision, the Strathmere and the Andover, they're both middle units, they're now named the Stanway and the Abram. And essentially, all we're seeking to do is have the elevation change such that it shows two garage doors instead of a single carriage garage door. And then, there would be two new...
Okay, I'm going to ask the question.
Yes.
Because we had a very long conversation about this.
Okay.
How is it we can now have two garage doors when you said over and over again, you can't have two garage doors?
So it's only occurring on the mid-units, for starters?
Nobody, nobody differentiated mid-units or anything else. We asked if you could do double garage doors, and consistently you said no.
So to represent exactly what the process has been, why we're calling them different names, is that they are structurally completely different homes. We've worked extensively to make them look dimensionally in every single way possible from the elevations, identical, with the exception of the garage door aspect, as was submitted, but engineering-wise, the floor plan, every aspect of the inside of the house has completely utterly changed since our original project, uh, product that we originally intended to use here. So we've been working extensively in our, in our architecture department since we had the approvals to come up with this new product. So it's been a massive undertaking, one which, even as of this moment, is still not one-hundred percent complete with engineering.
So why didn't you change the other ones?
What?
Why didn't you change the other ones?
Uh, they are not possible in the end units, because, and I'm going to explain this the best I can, architecturally, we cannot shift the unit around enough without actually widening that unit slightly. By widening that unit slightly, we then would not be in compliance with our building SEBRAC, as has been laid on the subdivision plans currently.
But the center unit hasn't widened any?
That is correct, but this is the way in which the center units layout versus the side unit. You come in from the side, a side-on-side unit versus a mid-unit, you approach from the front side of it. So we're able to steal room from the interior space on a mid-unit versus an end unit, and we're unable to steal the space from.
I, that doesn't make any sense to me.
I'm totally confused.
So am I.
How, so the width of the house, of the unit, hasn't changed a bit?
That is correct.
But you've got double doors in there.
That is correct.
And each one of these, you approach from the front, you don't approach them from the side. They have front driveways.
On the mid-units, correct.
Right? No, on the, the other ones, too.
All of them have front...
They all have front driveways, right? So it, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, the garage is a little bit wider than the mid-units.
All right, I, what...
But the, the house isn't?
Correct.
It's weird.
So why couldn't you do that with the other two?
Because the way you have the living space is adjoining the garage in the way it projects out on an end unit versus a mid-unit. On a mid-unit, it would go, it's hard to explain without sitting with a, with a floor plan, of course, but you cannot work the interior space well enough to actually make it work.
Do you think it would have been easier to just come in and say, all the middle units are going to have two doors, rather than one?
Yes.
And keep it, and keep it simple, rather than getting into, we changed the name, and we did this, and we did that?
I think the name is specified in it.
The name is...
It is specified in the permit, that's why, yeah.
All right.
What part did you review to change the inside of the middle unit?
To revamp the architecture, really. I mean, we, we're, we're constantly changing our product. I mean, this is, you can't be stagnant in this industry. You, you, we're constantly working to change shapes of islands, quantity of windows. We're always trying to make a product better whenever we see an opportunity. And we saw this as a good opportunity to really take a hard look at something, and go and see what we can do to improve it internally, and roll it out across actually a few different, few different projects that we have coming up right now.
So what are the dimensional differences here? I'm looking at a single-door garage door. How wide is that?
I don't have, these aren't our scale plans. Well, they're scaled, but I don't have a architectural scale in my presentation.
But, but the, but the key here, and I think what I'm hearing Dave say, is that they're trying to work within the footprint that was laid out on the plans, because that would be something that would, could, could pose a problem or a more substantial amendment necessary to the special permit. So what we're trying to, what we tried to do, obviously, is stay within the dimension of the pack, as opposed...
I, I get that. I like the double doors. I think we've always said, can you do double doors? And everybody said no, right?
Nobody wants them.
So now, we're looking at it, now you're going to do one out of three. Why not do all three of them as double doors?
Because that is not how it lays out and how it works with our design.
Okay, so I'm asking you, what do the dimensions look like? I'd like to understand that.
Architectural dimensions look exactly as if, if it's shown here, and for comparison purposes, I even have what is previously submitted, and you can hold this...
Right, so you fit double doors in a place where you had a single door before. Why can't you fit double doors in the other two places?
It's not one-hundred percent identical. We had to, we had to widen the garage ever so slightly in order to fit that, in order to fit that door there.
Not, not the building, no?
Correct, not the...
So why can't you do that with the others?
From an interior floor plan layout, when you enter into a, through a mid-unit, you enter through a foyer, not through a living space. Okay, on a, on an end unit, so the space adjoining the garage is a foyer space. If you narrow a foyer space down from an architectural standpoint, it's not a horrible ordeal. When, on the end unit, that mid, front room is a bedroom or a kitchen, you start stealing a foot and a half in that dimension, it becomes an extremely awkward, really unusable space. So that's why we're able to steal from a mid-unit, but you cannot steal from an end unit and make it architecturally work on the inside. Obviously, that's the best way I can describe it, although, of course, having a, a floor plan.
So can I ask you, that, two years down the road, you get into phase three, and you have another design change, that you're going to come back and tell us you're going to change something else, or you're going to ask us?
I would certainly, I think I would be well willing to do that. If we, we feel we want to make another change, or I think it's only, I think it would be required.
Yes, it would. Okay. Ben?
This might not be, you guys might not even know what this is, but could, since this is in our handout, could someone explain this little text section? It's like on the Vaughan, and it says problem statement and description, and it's talking about...
Oh, that's a, that's an internal, that's an internal architectural note, is part of the... That's an internal architectural note.
Okay.
I happen to, and so, Steve asked a question before I can finish, is the third aspect...
I apologize for that.
No, no worries. Strike it while it's hot. I, the third, the third issue is, we're adding two new offerings, which we're calling the Vaughan and the Kingston. And I indicated in my letter that they're both middle, middle units. Actually, the Kingston would be an end unit, as opposed to a middle unit. I just wanted to specify that, because I made a misstatement in the letter. But, you know, along the lines of having, you know, variation amongst these units is, what Toll has tried to do is, is have the units kind of maintain some of the exterior features that the design review committee was asking for, such as the, the front stone facade, kind of along the lower side of the exterior of the building, and some of the same, kind of similar roof lines that they had in the other units. And so, um, we think that it's probably an attribute to the project to add a few more looks to these packs. And so, that was the reason why they're adding two additional concepts as well.
Are these different sizes, like square footages?
The square footages do vary slightly, a hundred, maybe a hundred square feet variation, minimal.
The footprint is exactly the same?
Yes, correct. The width all implies and the depth, correct.
And the heights?
And the heights, absolutely. There's a restriction on the height, absolutely.
So what's the, sorry, I'm not a very good architect here. So what's the principal difference between, like, the Kingston and the Vaughan, as opposed to what else you might have put in there? What, what's providing the variety, I guess?
Well, between, between the two of them, or between...
No, you said you added variety, so what's the variety you added?
The biggest variety difference, there's several different variety differences to make that. So first, as floor plan layout-wise, how we've worked the interior space, maybe one, this is, I'm talking about first, the unforeseen stuff. On the unforeseen stuff, the interior is laid out differently.
Okay.
Of course, within the same, the footprint confines and the height confines, we've talked about, but it's, the features inside, maybe the bathroom's different, maybe it's flip-flop left versus right. Like, for instance, the Kingston has the main living space more, instead of centrally focused, the kitchen is pushed to the very rear of the home.
Okay.
And there's a bedroom in the front, as opposed to living space. The Vaughan, for example, we, we worked some of the interior space to have some, some lofted, really high cathedral spaces in the living space, really add some good, really volume spaces to the...
I think, I think that's all fine. I'm, I'm really just looking at exterior.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry, I, I go into, that, that is sort of what really springs us off into this exercise, but exterior-wise, we, we worked very hard to make sure we're keeping the same sort of architectural stylings, as, as Jeff just mentioned. Windows are the same windows. The garage doors will all be the same garage doors. Roofline, roof pitches, shapes are all rambunct in line with the other product. So there are minor differences in the sense that...
So it looks like the Vaughan, the, the second story, sort of, almost looks like a, a gable or whatever. It, it comes out further than the other ones.
Yeah, which, like, on the...
Is that right?
Which is correct. So like, the Andover has something similar, but it's a double gable, and this is a single gable, as an example. And on the, oh, Abram, I should say, the new Abram, the former Andover. And on the current stand, the current Stanway, which was previously the Stanford, that has a very similar detailing, except the roofline comes down at you instead of pitch left to right, if you will. Very, very minor differences, but I think a little subtlety here and there makes a, makes a difference.
Will these be combined? I'm just looking at the, I guess this one's the Vaughan, and it has, the second story above the garage is, is kind of an extended gable end, or whatever you might want to call it there.
So that portion would not...
So when you put it, I'm just, I'm just thinking, when you put it together with other units, you're not going to have all of those second stories on the same plane?
Uh, could, well, so in the case of the Vaughan, that projection you're talking about, that would not do the way it projects, it would never meld in, you would never have to meld that roofline into any other adjoining unit.
No, I, I get that, I'm just thinking about the visual of not having a straight plane across, not having some relief.
Blowing there with the job site. So for the most part, throughout the entire layout, and that depends on the topography of the site. So the unit rooflines inherently do step with the gradient road. So you'll get maybe a foot, anywhere from, say, six inches to a foot and a half even between units. So the units do step with the grade, because the driveways all have to meet the street. So even the highest peak naturally steps. So there's a lot of good variation that does occur once these units start blending it together, which is, it, there's no exact science even in that. Sometimes you have to make subtle changes to prevent traps, where water may actually end up being a detriment of snowmating the buildup. So you have to finesse the roofline a tiny bit on the connection point, so I apologize.
So on the one hand, this is changing the garage center doors from one to two.
Correct.
That's all you're really doing, and changing the names of these units.
Correct, and the two new ones.
And the two new ones. Is the draft motion correct?
Well, I mean, we think that as we go through here with some of the, because we, there's probably a couple minor corrections.
All right.
I already said two things.
What?
There's, just, I think it's Abram and Kingston, not Abraham and Kingston. Is that correct? With the naming convention?
Uh, Ab, Abram.
A-B-R.
A-B-R-A-M is the correct name.
Abram.
Like the tank?
Oh, is that on the, oh, is it written that way in the decision? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I was just looking at this for the first time.
And then Kingston, not Kingston?
Yes, that's, correct.
It's a good catch, Ben.
Thanks.
I brought my glasses.
All right. It's unfortunate that we wanted the double garage doors, and now we're getting them, which is, I suppose, a plus. Okay, we have a motion.
Um, yeah, this is a typographical on number one, it's, the two thousand seventeen is two thousand one hundred and seven.
Oh, yeah. What? Twenty-seven, yeah, we're a little ahead of ourselves.
Hundred years.
Only a hundred, hey. All right. We have a motion. Patty, do you have anything further to add, Bill?
No, it's, you know, I spend a lot of time to have a discussion about two doors.
I know, really.
Well, I would wholeheartedly endorse changing all of them to double doors.
But that's unfortunately not going to happen. All right.
I, I'm not convinced of that.
But, well...
I don't think you tried too hard.
Well, should we try harder?
I would love to see you try harder.
We, we tried significantly hard, there is no way of working it. If we could have worked it, we would have worked it.
I would like to see the dimensions on these, then.
But can we still go forward with this motion?
You do whatever you want.
All right. Patty. So...
I do have one substantive change on number three, because Karen, Karen correctly indicated that, what I, what I indicated in my letter, that both of the new offerings are middle dwelling units, and they're not. So I would just say, to add, the Vaughan and the Kingston to be added to the offering of dwelling units, just get rid of middle. I think that'll do it.
All right. All right, Patty, you're on.
So what are you suggesting, Steve, that we, that we take action on this one? Have them revisit the double doors?
I would like them to revisit the other double doors. I'd be happy to endorse these double...
We have, we have already internally visited it extensively as we can. There is no additional relation.
I'd like to see the demonstration of that, and I'll wait to approve this if, if you want to do that. But I'd like to see how you were able to make double doors work here, which look essentially the same dimension as the single doors. And, you know, you talk about the Design Review Committee, that was one of their major recommendations, right? Is to go to...
And we exhausted extensive architectural resources to come forth and come back to you with exactly what you wanted, with the best that we could work, because it has to work for us, too. It has to work with what we feel works from an architectural standpoint.
You told me, that it didn't work in any unit. Now, all of a sudden, it works in the center.
It did not work in any of the units that we had proposed for the project site. We went back and we re-engineered.
New units?
These are completely redesigned and revamped. That's why they have new names, because interiorizing all renamed. We have already done that with all the other ones.
Now, why, why couldn't you do this in the beginning, when we talked about it?
We were not prepared to go forth and redesign an entire product line at that point. We decided to make a shift internally and revamp a product line at a later date. Like I said, we do this all the time, and we were not at that juncture designing a whole product line.
I would like to see, I would like to see the detailed dimensions on these.
So, so what, so, I guess what, what's going through my mind is, is, it seems to me, is if what you're contemplating is designing buildings here?
No, I'm going back-
And not only does it does.
I'm going back to what we originally talked about when we went through the review, right?
Right.
And the review was, can we do double doors on all of these? Because the big, single doors are ugly, right? And we had this extensive conversation over multiple meetings where everybody on that side of the table said, "It cannot be done." And here we are, a few months later, and suddenly it can be done. So I'm asking, why couldn't we have done it in the beginning? And why can't we do it now?
And I think Dave answered the question for you.
Well, he said, but they, you answered the question for me four times before, where you all said no. Now you're answering a question where you're saying, "Well, yes, one, two, no."
Except that we have different units altogether. We're proposing a completely different middle unit.
Same dimensions on the garages, though?
No, I think that the garages are slightly wider.
No, the garages are slightly wider, as explained.
They are. You can tell that they're wider.
The building isn't any wider.
Correct.
Right.
So, so there was this entire unit on the, on the inside, on the floor layout of the first floor in particular.
So you've taken the building, and you squished the garage in? Were there single doors?
The garage projects within the space. All right. So you take a fixed width, which is roughly thirty-four feet. On a mid-unit, this is your garage, you come in through, hang on. Come on, if I come up, it's easier.
No, go ahead. I'd love to see it.
So this is, you enter through the front of a mid-unit, right here, like in the case of an Abram or Andover. If this garage, when this garage expands ever so slightly, this is the foyer, and you're stealing from the foyer space. In the case of a, from an architectural standpoint, does not greatly detriment by taking away from the aesthetic inside of the house from a floor plan layout. Take a Braxton or Brenton, door is upside down and backwards. You enter from the side. So the foyer is on, I'm just trying to guess as best I can. You enter from the side of the unit. So this is the foyer here, and the garage is built within the space here, or projects out depending upon the unit. This front space here is a bedroom, uh, in some layouts, a kitchen in others, a breakfast area in others. You, the mention, we're dealing a lot in inches on some of these units for making them feel architecturally, um, balanced on the inside, and really usable spaces. You steal that same square footage from a kitchen or from a bedroom. It turns from a usable space into rather awkward, rather awkward space. And that is the issue of why an end unit versus a mid-unit, you can make it work. We don't look, we have to look at it more than just from the outside. We're looking at it from a planning view as well.
So you're telling me that this space, from here to here, is materially larger than it was before?
That is correct.
How much?
Generally speaking, offhand, without having it in front of me, I'm going to say roughly eighteen inches. Maybe it's twelve, maybe it's sixteen, I mean, I don't have it in front of me. But you have to, you have to grow because- Give you sort of the- Maybe I'll get lucky.
Are these the scale?
Maybe I'll get lucky. We should be, relative to each other.
No, they're not.
No, not going to get lucky.
Uh-uh.
All right, I figured I might. But visually, these would be about the same architecturally. This is eight feet, that's eight feet, that's sixteen feet. So your delta is this entire pier in the middle, to give you that visual.
Mm-hmm.
Generally speaking, it runs about eighteen, eighteen inches, give or take. That's the difference in your width.
And then you cannot, where's the other one? Where's the single door? The one we were just looking at, that you drew on? Is that here? Here. So-
You steal that space from a kitchen, that's, that's significant, that's significant space.
So what you're saying, can I use this?
Sure.
So what you're saying is, this dimension, from here to there, is eighteen inches less than what you've now designed on this one?
Correct.
And you attempted to take and add nine inches on each side, or whatever it is, in order to get it in?
Well, because there, well, in-
But that's the, that's the exercise you went through.
Yes. In the case of an end unit, you only have one direction, is, is completely all in one direction, because you have your demising wall as fixed point, which is, so you can't widen this way at all on a, on an end unit.
Okay.
Uh, well, you really can't widen towards the demising wall in any unit. That, that remains, in the case of this, as an end unit. That's this line here. So your only way on an end unit is to go towards a living space. On a mid-unit, though, it's very similar.
What did you have? So this, this space right here isn't accessible to you? This space going this way?
So this space here is, well, of course, that, that's exterior space. So in the case of an Andover, um, an Andover, this is the demising wall. So if we shift out this garage, which is what we essentially-
See, that all protrudes out, right?
That was duplicate, that was the Andover.
This all protrudes out.
Which allows us to make the expansion not greatly impact the interior space. And what impact we're doing, because this is the interior unit we're talking about, that does not greatly impact our interior space. And what bit of it that you can't see from an exterior point of view does project into the unit, um, as far as from a overhead floor plans layout, really only impacts that, you know, that coke closet, foyer sort of space. And that, that is why we're able to really steal that extra space from the inside on a mid, on a mid-unit versus an end unit. The only way to do it on an end unit, the only way to do it would be to widen the end unit. And we're, the way, the whole project's already been significantly engineered, uh, we have requirements on, I believe it's thirty, thirty, thirty-five feet offhand, I can't remember, I think it's thirty feet. In some instances throughout the site, we are right up against that minimum width requirement between units. So by trying to introduce and re-engineer the end unit to make it a little bit wider, and in some cases, we are designing the homes within inches, and I may be exaggerating, within like four inches of being, um, right on the money so it actually lines up and we don't have, um, any conflicts on width between units. So eighteen inches is a lot, especially if, for example, we had two units next to each other, thinking about what that does, it actually would add three feet and reduce that total width, um, by two times whatever we'd have to make that end unit wider in order to actually, and we'd obviously be significantly in compliance with the plans and the minimum setback requirements of the zone. So that, that's really what, sort of, the exercise that really led us to where we're at today. I don't know if that, best way I can explain it verbally, of course.
No, I'm just, I'm very surprised you were so adamant for so many meetings about this issue in the citing process, and then suddenly we're back talking about, oh, we want to go to double doors.
Well, I mean, it's-
And believe me, I'd much rather you go to double doors than not.
Yeah, no, you're right. That was, that was-
And we're receptive.
That was the point I was going to make, Steve, is, is by, by saying no to this motion tonight and denying this motion, the effect of that is just ensuring single doors throughout, throughout the project.
Well, I was prepared to approve it and add a condition that you look at, adding, going to double doors on the other units.
Like I said, architecturally, we just can't make it work, though. We just can't. I mean, for the reasons I just elaborated, it, you know, we, we looked at it, you know, we would like to be able to do it and make it work on interior space. We, we, we spent a tremendous amount of architectural resources, tremendous amount, to revamp this entire product line to come forth today. And for what minimal aesthetic changes, um, that we're, we're talking about, it was a tremendous undertaking. And certainly, if we could have done it, and could have sat here and said, "We managed to do it for everything," we would love to have done that. Uh, we have no advantage to not make it work, uh, other than it just doesn't work.
That was the point it made when we originally talked about.
Well, I know, but that was then, and this is now, and so we need to go-
I think I shoveled a different pile of sand.
Yeah, I know you do. We all do.
I think I shoveled a different pile of sand than I was before.
Yes, yeah, right, okay.
How much wider is a single door than a double doors?
Well, the doors themselves, the, the single is sixteen, give or take a little bit, and the singles are eight feet, give or take a little, little bit. Your biggest difference on your total width is that main center column that is structural. So you've got, most people, if you ever paid attention to the garage door, you get a metal track that comes down, and it's got a certain width to it, then you get these sensors and the photo beams. So that, that ends up taking off, like I said, about an eighteen inch, sixteen inch, give or take, width to that whole central column. That really is the overage and the difference between a single versus a double door.
Thank you. Patty.
Okay, I move that the planning board votes to approve the waiver modification of condition number one of the special permit filed with the town clerk on May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, as the waiver modification is insignificant and does not materially adversely affect the purpose of this special permit decision. Number one, architectural elevations by Toll Architecture dated eight thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, showing Andover, Bethel, Bristol, Brentath, and Bucknell strathmere unit elevation shall now be known as the Abram, Bethel, Brenton, Braxton, Barron, and Stanway, respectively, as stated in the architectural elevations by Toll Architecture dated nine thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. Two, modify the Abram, AKA the Andover, and the Stanway, AKA the strathmere, such that these middle dwellings will contain two garage doors instead of a single garage door as depicted on the Toll Architecture elevations dated nine thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. Three, the addition of two new offerings, the Vaughan and the Kingston, to be added to the offering of dwelling units depicted on the Toll Architectural Elevations dated nine thirteen, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to propose to add a condition. And that condition is that I'd like to see the, not the, just the, um, three-dimensional drawings here, but I'd like to see the dimensional drawings for the double doors and the single doors. Essentially, the garage layouts.
Still confused as to what we're accomplishing by the condition.
I would like to see it. You said you've done it, it shouldn't be hard, right?
But what are you asking for specifically so, is the question?
I want to see the dimensions of both of these types of doors, as they exist in these various, these various, uh-
The difference between an eight-foot door and a seven-foot door, I'm, I'm still not can-
You've designed, if you've designed this, you have drawings for it.
Certainly, I'm just trying to understand the-
So please submit them.
Okay. Which, that, that is actually already a requirement, to submit a master set to the town anyways.
Right.
So that'll be part of the master sets in middle. So we will satisfy that condition.
Do you have them now?
Uh, we're almost complete with the master set. So that'll be submitted as part of the master set.
All right, the motion has been amended. Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill and I can't forget my answer.
Thank you.
Now we have, uh, Crescent Avenue. Does anybody need to take a break?
Bureau point's in the hallway, I think.
No.
All right.
Done a lot of waiting around.
Is anybody out there for Crescent?
Bureau point is there.
Stevie Bajorklin.
We already saw this one, didn't we?
Yeah, but they've changed the-
Oh, no.
Oh, yes. All right. We are now on an A and R for One Crescent Avenue. Mr. Bajorklin.
Yes. First, I want to see Steve Bajorklin for the record, um, One Crescent Ave Realty Trust. And I'm at a little disadvantage, because I just got back from vacation, so you guys all have the plan. I actually don't have it in my hand.
Here.
But I, I don't even think I need it, as long as you have it there. What happened when we originally did this division line between the two properties, I had met with the building inspector, and he had, at the time, agreed that my hundred feet of frontage that I had was adequate to do this division. And we actually received a permit to put the first foundation in on the Bridge Ave lot. We went back for a full building permit, and at the time, when we went for the full building permit, he said, "I really want you to have a hundred feet of frontage from the street back to the first part of the dwelling on Bridge Ave, which is thirty feet." So what we did is, we just redrew the line so that it's a hundred feet wide until we get to the first part of the dwelling, which actually has the foundation in the ground already. And then we compensated for that by adjusting the line that's in between the two houses so that the square footage stays over ten thousand square feet for each lot. It's, that's basically it in a nutshell.
Karen?
Exactly what Mr. Bajorklin said, and they both lots have access and frontage in, uh, on Crescent Ave and Bridge Ave, and the plan can be endorsed.
Discussion?
Doesn't change anything in terms of what trees get saved or anything like that? It's just a division line?
Right.
It's just a division line.
All right, um, Patty, I move to endorse this approval not required of plan of land in Central Mass showing the division of Plaza fifty-six dash two dash seventeen F, One Crescent Ave, prepared by Ross Engineering Company, Inc., for applicant owner One Crescent Ave Realty Trust dated ten five eighteen, as the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows every lot on the plan has frontage of at least a distance presently required under the Central Zoning Bylaw on a public way, namely Crescent Ave and Bridge Ave.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Hope that was the easiest one of the night.
Thank you, Stephen.
One of those that kept us closer from going home.
There you go. Okay, we have Fifty Country Way.
Trees, trees, trees.
Fifty Country Way.
It is five minutes away. Start.
You can start, I mean, if the board wants to wait, or if the board wants Mr. Hoffman to start.
You may start, Mr. Hoffman. Please identify yourself for the record.
Michael Hoffman.
And your address, sir?
Uh, two oh five Country Way.
Thank you. So what exactly are you planning to do here, sir?
So the original plans from two thousand and thirteen state, um, that the sidewalk, or, uh, the plans show that the, they wanted to match the Country Way sidewalk, um, that is in front, uh, kind of from Reynolds all the way going around the sidewalk up the hill into Stockbridge. There are bricks, there's a design of bricks, I believe, that it's, um, is- There are bricks, there's a design of bricks, I believe, that it's, is one, a row of vertical bricks, and then two horizontal. And on the plans, I think there was a little misinterpretation that stated the bricks were supposed to go on the building side. What Mike McDougall did in the meantime is, had started, he put the curving and the sidewalks in and for the bricks to go on the inside. The other portion of that is the sidewalk on Country Way measures, I believe, four foot six, is that correct? The actual concrete measures four, four feet six inches, and the bricks are, I believe, around 18 inches. All the bricks have settled on the street side. So we have people with wheelchairs coming in, and for pedestrian passage, there's about an inch gap, if you look on, if you look outside, if you were in front of the building or in front of Reynolds, you'll see there's about an inch gap between the bricks from settling and the concrete on the sidewalk. And what we're proposing is a wider sidewalk, it'd be about five foot, sorry, wider concrete would be about five foot six inches wide, and a smaller amount of bricks for the future because the way that the sidewalk has settled in Country Way, it is in actually need of repair, and it'd be a safety hazard down the line, we may have to rip it up, and/or there's also vegetation growth in between them.
Good. All right, Steve, you were in on this one, and so were you, Bill. Comments?
I'm just trying to remember what the original design was here. So the original design was six-foot-wide walkway, sidewalk, concrete with brick strip on the building side.
So Mike McDougall interpreted that as the bricks on the, on the building side, as the bricks were on the, you know, the bricks were on the inside of the building. The design, on the picture of the design, shows them on the outside.
I gave you the sheet, the landscape detail sheet attached there that shows the public access walkway showing them against the curb and the bricks, and...
Is this the one that construction details or something?
These are the construction details, and on the inside, so that's what was, that's what you approved, and then on the inside, there was supposed to be, you know, a fence, and as Mr. Hoffman just said, the contractor just had a different interpretation, and that's why I thought it would be wiser for them to come back to the board and ask your opinion.
Just give me a second, I just want to look at it. Can't see it on these little drawings.
How can you read that? You can't.
So it had a, it looks like it actually had three rows, is that right?
Correct.
Brick strip, a double running bond, and then, and then just a sideways, whatever you call it.
True horizontal.
Yeah.
Correct, yes. So...
And you're proposing to eliminate the true horizontal?
Well, we can, we have room, we're, we have room, I guess, more or less, the sidewalks would be, the concrete portion would be, I believe, around five foot six inches wide. And then the bricks, we're proposing to, but we're willing, we can go to the original scale. There's a couple areas that restrict the, would restrict, I guess, the, having the full scale, where you'd have to go maybe two bricks across. Peter should be here momentarily, he has some photos to describe it more.
Yeah, we gave them the photo that you, that you gave them, and we gave them the layout plan, and I gave them the original.
So the, you know, being a part of the future on the property management and tenant side, my concern was the settlement on Country Way is a hazard. We have potential of two or three people coming in that are going to be handicapped.
I broke my arm there. I broke my arm from the yoga studio on those bricks two years ago, so.
You know, huh? You know, then, what is...
Can I chime in on that, though? Can I chime in, though? That a properly installed hardscape, the bricks shouldn't be settling like that. I mean, I do that for a living, and that, it was probably a bad install.
And I don't know that reducing it by a brick is going to make a difference.
Yeah.
Right.
I do know an enjoying style, yeah.
That's why we wanted to go the, I believe it's five foot six, the concrete would be, which would be a wider, you know, call it pedestrian passage, where the bricks would be, they show 17 and a half, I think it would take it down to seven inches wide.
And then what would be on the other side between the, would you put grass in there or plants or what?
Yeah, there's going to be landscaping, we're going to put seed, grass, plants, I believe, don't quote me, I believe Northern Oak or one of the local companies has a, is lined up to do that once everything's ready to go. The other portion is, we are replacing the sidewalk on the Country Way side at the top. That will be to scale of exactly what was there now, and that sidewalk is in need of repair as well.
So what is the, so this is going to tie into that sidewalk, right?
Yes.
And so what, how does it, how does it make the transition? How does the brick make the transition? Is the brick on the, I don't remember, where's the brick on the Country Way?
It's on the outside.
Near the street?
It's on the street side, yes.
And so you won't actually be able to bring, the brick won't come over and tie into it, then?
No. You, correct, yes. It's on the outside, so it wouldn't be able to tie in, and that, actually, I guess it would, it'd go around the side. We could tie in something, you know, extend the bricks out so it's kind of a turn going in there off the sidewalk.
I was just trying to avoid it looking like nobody thought through it.
Yeah.
I don't know how you fix it, but Ben might, he knows how to do this stuff.
I'm thinking if you could match, the other thing we could do is kind of, is match the beginning portion of the sidewalk off of Building A to match that, and then as it goes down, at some point, there's a narrower spot where it has to thin out.
How does that solve the settling problem with the bricks?
How does it, excuse me?
How does it solve the settling problem with the bricks?
Well, the, so the settlement would still be there, but the, the, the Country Way scale, I believe, is four foot six on the concrete that stayed intact, so we extended that by a foot, so there'd be a smaller amount, there'd only be seven inches of brick, which would kind of allow for a wheelchair passing or pedestrian passing. It'd kind of take the bricks, they may settle, and we'd have to repair that over time, but it'd take the safety, I guess, the safety hazard out of play.
So basically, if I understand this correctly, the contractor made a mistake.
Um...
Yes.
Not really, right?
Well, yes, he did, because...
He read, he read a different...
He misinterpreted it, inverted it.
No, it was badly written.
Okay, well, I'm...
I think, it looks like you have this detail, which shows the brick on the curb side, right? And then you have the note that says the bricks on the building side.
And the other thing that he pointed out was that there's, the actual sidewalk itself, the drawing doesn't have, doesn't show any brick on it.
Well, then we have a multitude of things, so he didn't make a mistake.
Yeah, that was sort of, because they put the note on it, they expected the brick, right?
Well, in the scheme of things, is this a really a big deal? Steve, do you have the bricks on the inside as opposed to the outside?
No, I just think they need to figure out how to make the transition into the Country Way side.
Yeah, I think if we take, you know, from the outside, we either, then would you, maybe have it curved or cornered?
Skinny, though.
Skimpy.
Does it?
I mean, I think overall, like, this is, this is corny, look. I'm sorry, like, the original plan, like, that makes sense, it's nice, it fits with down there, and the brick is incorporated as a functional part of the hardscape. This is, this, this concrete walkway is already wider than what the four, whatever the original, four-two original plan was. So now it's kind of like this, just, like, honestly, I almost would say take the brick away, personally, right? And just put more landscaped there, but, I mean, I guess stick to whatever the plan is as close as you can. I wasn't here for permitting this project, so I don't know what the intent was.
I think the intent was to show a transition from the main walk, that this is a public walkway, right? This is part of the public walkway. So the idea was to make that transition with the brick so that it sort of tied together. That's why I was saying, how do we tie it together?
Could we, I guess, could propose is the start of that, we tie that in off of Country Way, because they're already replacing the sidewalk in front of Building A, and on the outside, and you, you know, I don't know exactly how, I'd have to, Ben might be able to have a suggestion is tie that in, and we could have the beginning portion of that, first a hundred...
The great turnaround and...
Going in as the normal thing, and then transition from there.
Because he's drawing.
He's drawing, yes.
I'm just thinking.
Can we have a picture of that other brick, the other sidewalk?
Yeah, that's what I don't think of.
The Country Ways are one.
Yes.
Yeah. Not this one, but this one.
So that's just at the end of it?
That's a portion, that's the left side of Building B.
This portion here with On Country Way?
Oh, yeah, here's, sorry. This is what we could kind of match from here. See all the brick footings there? Could almost make that.
Is this what you install?
That was existing.
That's existing, right? So that is, let me just get it oriented here. So that is this, is that up here?
I believe so. Because this is the hydrant, this is the garage, rental side garage there, and then the built-in.
Yeah, there's the hydrant there. So that's this strip right here. And then your sidewalk comes up and ties into that brick.
Correct.
So there is a brick sort of buffer between the sidewalk and this concrete, right? Is there?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that patio part right in front of Building A is, would buffer that, yes.
So then would it be able to tie in to the brick?
It seems like it dead ends into the brick, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would...
It'd actually match up because it'd start right over there.
Isn't it tying in anyway?
So you would just have a brick strip in the sidewalk?
In between the two?
Right down to Country Way?
Mm-hmm.
We could do that.
Isn't that what this is? Maybe I'm looking at, is this at the other end or something? Where's this?
I don't know where that is.
Where's this?
Which end is this?
That's actually between Buildings B and A.
Between B and A.
So that would be...
Oh, it's over here somewhere? Oh, yeah, there's the curb right there. So that's right there. Right here.
Ben's right, it does look dippy.
Well, if you add the horizontal run, it's going to look worse, right?
Yep.
Then you're going to have this tiny little strip of grass.
The only thing, the only thing I'm thinking now, like, that...
That's a bigger picture of the Building A there.
Right.
So...
And your sidewalk's coming up this way to it, yeah?
Yeah, and I think what McDougall suggested here was he was going to put granite sidewalk because, I don't know if this is parking, there's no curb here.
You mean they're replacing it?
This, yeah, we're, he's supposed to be replacing every portion of this, is that correct, Peter?
Please, sir.
Yeah, we were going to, we were going to do granite curb, 16-inch brick, and then concrete sidewalk to match this. They were going to match this going down as new.
Okay.
I guess what we're discussing now is maybe we could put the granite brick and put all the bricks back in here, or go back, I mean...
I'm confused.
You know, I'm confused, I wasn't confused. So this is just a pre-existing condition, right? So what...
Yeah, I know what that is.
So what they're proposing to do is come across with a brick here, or the granite curb and a brick here, and then this all becomes concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So this is concrete, this is all concrete. And then all you have at the curb, at the front of the curb, is the granite curb and the strip of brick, like this. So this all becomes concrete back here, is what you're saying?
But it'll be, we're going to have the granite blocks and a set of stairs up to a raised grass terrace in front of, with the Wetherby House.
Oh, so this isn't concrete, this is the Belgian block or whatever?
Yeah, we're going to, we'll have the sidewalk, maybe six feet, and then we'll have a granite block.
After the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Oh, granite block wall. So this is all concrete?
That's maybe 30 inches high.
But the idea is you would put, you would carry this through?
Yeah.
This granite curb?
Yeah.
This is the brick strip, and this is concrete?
Concrete sidewalk, and then it'll be...
And then you have the wall?
A granite retaining wall.
Yeah.
Ben, you had a thought?
Oh, it was just about this little strip on this side. The only functional thing I could think about this is to demarcate that it's a public right-of-way, kind of like if you guys are walking the Freedom Trail in Boston.
Yeah.
It's losing its functionality from what it was in the original plan, and I think it looks really corny personally now, but at least you kind of have that. But there needs to be a way to link that brick strip with the brick sidewalk there.
Yeah.
Whether you have to saw cut one concrete pad and set it in or something, it needs to connect, otherwise then it's really...
You probably put it all in and pour the concrete, right?
Yeah, yeah, just, I mean, I don't know what's existing or not.
Well, the existing is this stamped brick, it's like fake brick.
Oh, then that's all coming out, yeah.
So that comes out.
Yep.
And then we can run a, this brick strip right up to the granite...
If you're demolishing that, then just do whatever, you guys can do whatever you want. I thought you had to, like, cut into an existing concrete sidewalk or something.
Okay. So what are we going to tell these people? We don't have to have a motion, do we, Karen?
Well, I just wanted them to have guidance from you, what they, I mean, because...
I think that's right. I, you know, even if it looks maybe a little corny?
Yeah.
I think visually it gives the connection.
Yeah.
Right.
From the street to the public.
I think that was the intent of it originally.
Right, that's, that's why we thought it was important, right?
Right. The intent of the original one was to have a brick out front and then the public access walkway.
Right.
So that's why I recommended they come in to get your guidance on this.
I think, yeah, I think that was good.
Are you guided, then? Do you know what you're doing and how you're going to do it?
Yes, I just want to see Ben's drawing.
Oh, I didn't draw, I didn't really draw anything. I'm just like...
You have to stamp this.
So this was coming off Country Way.
Well, I think, I think if you have the Country Way sidewalk, which was horizontal...
It's right there.
It's right here. Oh, yeah. Okay, so vertical and then, and then horizontal. Here's your vertical ones.
I use the collective...
If this is concrete coming through, here's your public walkway, which is now concrete. Here's your two brick strips coming down, just...
Bring them over.
Yeah, and like, I thought you guys would have to saw cut, I thought this was existing, but it sounds like that's getting demolished anyways. So just have your mason or landscape contractor just...
Just tie it in.
Tie it in.
Yeah.
And I think a right angle's fine, because then if you're coming sideways, like, that, you see that, and you go, oh, so this is something, you know?
And then we'll put a sign, I think we're putting a sign up.
Yeah, there's a sign that goes there as well.
It's like that Freedom Trail in Boston, you know?
But that's using the metal.
Yeah.
You have to saw cut the existing...
Is there language for the sign?
Wasn't it on?
I think it was something in the...
Didn't we have it somewhere?
Something in the conditions. And then, what about the fencing? It said, "An informational sign indicating public access path or similar shall be installed of a style coordinated with other public wayfinding signs in town."
So, is there, is there a sign, like, over or off of the driftway for that same path going the other way? You know where it picks up, by the train station over there?
Is there a, I don't know.
That, well, the, the exit road.
Ford Place?
Yeah, ends at Ford Place.
Yeah, I'm just thinking on the other end, on the driftway, right?
Yeah, I guess Ford Place, yeah, there's no MBTA sign where it had started off at Drew Place. I'll, I can check on Ford, but I'm thinking...
There's another one, what's the other one over by the, isn't the one by the, isn't there one for the condos over there somewhere? Is there a public walk over there or something?
By the Riverway?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Is there one that goes by the little cemetery and all that?
There's one to the right of...
Maybe I don't remember that.
There's one to the right of Saltshark Art of Parts there, the MBT's got the little park. There's some kind of sign here and there, I know that.
Yeah, that's conservation land.
Yeah.
All right, you have your marching orders, then, you know what you're doing, hopefully?
So, Ben, to clarify, you, the, the brick goes, extends all the way, not just the start? Very far as we can go?
Yeah, I think you can follow all the way.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I don't know if that... Be a way to tie it in in the back, too. I don't know what that looks like.
How are things progressing?
We're, we're on the homestretch.
Do you have your fire access in?
We have it all prepped, and we're waiting for the, the asphalt contractor, who's doing, going to do a site visit on Monday, and then, he puts us on his calendar, within the next two weeks, is what we're told. So, we're, hopefully, we'll get it paved by end of October.
Which was supposed to be the middle of August, but who's counting?
So... I know. It's turning, it was turning out to be a bit of a engineering debacle with this stone had to be shipped in from New Hampshire.
Okay.
For the specs and...
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to, that I will entertain Bill's motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Can I, I just, I'm not really clear on what you're discussing.
So, they're, they're doing this, right? We didn't, they're going to do this granite curb.